I guess for most of those six o'clock we can't start now, we don't think.
Yeah, let's go.
That's what I thought it was. Uh, when we're everybody here, we got a thing right tonight, that's okay too. It's a work session, we're gonna talk, we discuss, and then we're gonna come back and cover everything. But before we go all that, I want to have an implication that we have a pledge of allegiance to the flag. That is right. I do have a thank you for the opportunity to serve the people who moved tonight, help us make our decision for the people, and help us always keep your will in our minds. And hopefully they will do as he said, too, well, for if I say that in his name, amen. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the business for liberty and justice for all.
Now, y'all got a copy of the music last, last month? You could look at it. Uh, we'll approve it next week, and this, this I guess changes, might change, we'll approve it. Uh, the other month, this month is sort of special, but this month and next month is sort of special. It's a fall harvest promotion, and also a Halloween thing, so both of those. So, this month, we're gonna have to go pick ten winners, each one will be a hundred dollar credit, each one can pick two, one for Halloween and one for fall. There's a lot happening everywhere, you can walk around town, so we'll just give them two seven opportunities here.
Two for this month?
Mm-hmm. And we've had some requests that, you know, we wait till the end, we have a late holiday, about we're putting up for Halloween decorations, so just wait till the end of the month, that might be better.
Right, so right, the last weekend of this month is one of the ones we found good, uh, this one, this two, say the last Saturday or evening, Halloween's on Monday night, but probably Saturday night, Sunday night, so you can put it on website or announce a date, they think most people, that's gonna be the Halloween, Halloween.
Okay.
And next week, we're doing the fall.
Do the fall next week.
Can I clarify that again? Pick one, next week for fall, the people at the end of the month for Halloween.
Good.
Okay. I didn't explain that good number, good year. All right, this, that's capital money. My favorite part of the day.
Why don't you turn this off? Picks me up too. All right, good news. Good news. Uh, bank balances remain constant, uh, we've got right over five million dollars in the bank, no major changes, uh, you'll hear me talking this minute about, so payments we'll be making in the next few days. Anyway, so the current conditions under the general fund, uh, where believe it or not, we're about seventy-three percent of the, uh, year's still in front of us, so we've almost completed twenty-seven percent, where we should be at about seventy-nine point seven, or excuse me, should be at seventy-three percent remaining, uh, the general fund, we're at seventy-nine percent, we make those adjustments, and of course, you get to hear me say this all the time, you know, we have the windfall of five hundred fifty-two thousand dollars that's showing up still as revenue, when we pull that number out, brings it back, more back to reality where we should be at this time of year. More importantly, as I always say, doesn't how much you brought in, how much have you spent, where we should be at seventy-three percent, uh, we're actually at about seventy-nine percent remaining, so we're in pretty good shape. When you back out that five hundred fifty-two thousand dollars, however, we're actually running a negative on the general fund of fourteen thousand dollars, not to be concerned right now. On the water and sewer fund, again, where we should be at about seventy-three percent, we're actually, as you know, we have had a windfall again with sewer tap fees, so we back out that average, we budgeted a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, and we back out, uh, those dollars to reality, uh, we're at about sixty-two percent in revenue, which is good. What I want y'all to always pay attention to is the water and sewer revenue, and where we should be at about seventy-three percent remaining, we're in a good position of seventy percent on, uh, water revenue and sewer revenue of about seventy-two percent. However, uh, you know, our trend will be to lower capacity over the next winter months, so anticipate that. When we go back to the expenditure side of the equation, uh, where we should be at seventy-three percent, we do have miscellaneous expense where we paid out for sewer line I out of the, uh, fund already of a hundred fifty thousand dollars, and so that kind of throws the numbers off a little bit, where you actually are about eighty percent remaining when you knock those numbers out. So we have a positive, positive cash flow of about two hundred eighteen thousand dollars between both those funds right now. Anybody got any questions for me? This is some really detailed, good stuff.
Like not reading it.
Well, all right, so a couple of other things we need to talk about, uh, let's see if I do them in order here. Carter Alley update, we have a proposal for nine thousand dollars for Carter Alley to do the environmental assessment of the four houses, and, uh, we had looked at that contract, I'm gonna have Joey do the finals on it, uh, we've identified that's, we gotta do that work before we can put it out for demolition bid, because we gotta understand whether or not they're being impacted by environmental concerns, so, uh, we're gonna pay that as floss dollars unless I hear anything from the council with regards to that. Joey, as long as you're happy with the nine pages I have, we'll see if you are or not. But anyway, uh, the other item that we have on, uh, on that is the GMA health insurance. And so, um, we're in an umbrella plan for everybody in the audience to understand, and that means instead of being grouped, uh, for our particulars, we're grouped overall with, uh, some of the four hundred participants in the, uh, GMA and ACCG program. That being said, we saw an eight percent increase in premiums this year, and unfortunately, uh, that's not the norm. Uh, last two years, we actually had a decline in payments last year, and then a two percent increase in the year before. So the finance committee asked us to go out and test the market. A couple of things work against us. One, uh, to have an umbrella plan usually takes about twenty-five employees, and, uh, you know, we don't enjoy that many employees, I guess that's a plus in the minds. So what ends up happening is they judge you on your age and your health conditions, and what we found is that is not favorable to the insurance, unfortunately. And, uh, we've been waiting till October first to be able to get numbers on, uh, for some of the carriers won't have it, and those still are not favorable. Uh, we've met with the finance committee, uh, we'll have to meet again, because we have to make a decision, uh, for the end of the month, whereas some of that money, you know, obviously we didn't budget for an eight percent increase, and then there's the, uh, question of what participation, if any. Uh, certainly for family coverage, that'll be the responsibility of the employee, uh, if they carry it, but the other side of the equation is, we've looked at everything from changing the deductibles, uh, putting the city at risk, and absorbing some of that deductible cost, at the end of the day, it is just not a pretty picture. So, uh, and I would say that's true for the health industry as a whole, when we look to see what might be down the road, this may become more than normal. Anybody got any questions for me? On that matter?
I think we watched after the vote.
We have, we have. Uh, you want to go ahead and go into water?
Yeah, please.
So, uh, water service additions, uh, thank goodness, both systems are doing quite well, uh, we've watched the water consumption, we'll add that's beginning to level off a little bit as far as demand over capacity. Sewer line I actually have a construction meeting this week, uh, we've made a great deal of progress. I have a payout of, uh, that I approved for, uh, payment number five for two hundred twenty-two thousand dollars, that's been submitted to GFA for payment, and, uh, we'll be issuing that check probably this week. Uh, Mountain View List Station Pump Number One, I told you, was out of service, uh, that's been repaired and back in service. I'll just remind you that all the pump stations, you know, this is why we budgeted the way we did, uh, they've got age on them, and they're broke, we need to fix them, and we did that in that particular case. Uh, good news, built, uh, Belton Bridge well development status, so, uh, we were able to obtain, uh, EPD approval on, uh, the well development, and, uh, we should, and we've signed a contract for that, we should begin construction, uh, by the end of the month, with the idea that we would get in the test well in the first two weeks, be able to do an analysis, and then come back to see what the production possibilities are for that, if that well is successful. I remind everybody, as I do every meeting, so if we do everything we want to do, and we get a good production well, uh, build all the facility as well as all lines, we're looking at an expenditure that the council has given consideration of three hundred twenty-eight thousand. Initially, our test wells, uh, our initial payments will be twenty-six thousand, uh, we hope to see those on the test well stay under seventy thousand. But I just signed, uh, one deal today for the hydrologist, uh, for, uh, Mees of Two Thousand, but it'll light up quick. The other thing I wanted to add was, if you remember, uh, Moss Family Properties had proposed a location of, uh, for a well, and so we have our hydrologist looking at those locations now to see if they're actually adequate. Encouraged at this point, we'll give you the report for report, uh, once we receive it. That's all I've got for water and sewer. Uh, we'll tell you, Trinity took a fall at the Way Street Plant a week ago Friday, had two fractures, finally got to see a orthopedic surgeon today, and will be, uh, the fractures, uh, you know, are minor in scale, but nonetheless, uh, they're still gonna put pins and screws in his knee, so, or in his knee, so we'll see how that comes out. So keep him in your thoughts and prayers, uh, he seems to be doing pretty well overall, and, uh, he'll actually be back into work, uh, Wednesday this week. Anyway, any questions on water and sewer?
Yes, good to hear about Trinity.
Yes, unfortunately that happened.
Uh, both committees, yes, and we did recommend that by him be issued to the county for that separate. He said, does our member that for it?
No, I thought.
Her permission, I didn't know you was there. So we'll consider that next week, and put it issue.
And we have two different prices, just bring everybody back up to speed. Uh, we have a price of, uh, seven hundred eighty-two for just the camera only, that would be if we were responsible for all the downloads on the data stream, or, uh, you can have a sixty-month contract of seven thousand one hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars, and that would be provided by Anaxx Enterprises who also supplies the cameras, so that would be a big question overall, when you look at it over another five-year period of time, uh, is it worthwhile or do? The idea was, if you recall, we had some discussion, that we could take one of our servers that were taken offline, or actually replacing that server, and that lets that become the sole server for all camera feed, and so that's an option available too, with the idea that we'd be upgrading all the hardware this year.
Dennis, will you say that number again?
So seven thousand one hundred fifty-seven dollars is, uh, for a sixty-month contract, where they would provide all the data storage in the cloud, and then the lesser amount, if you just buy the camera outright, uh, seven hundred eighty-two dollars for this camera.
So that's for the full sixty months, or is that for a year?
Seven.
Seven thousand?
Seven thousand for sixty months.
Okay.
Now, we also discussed, do we take a deal home with him? Did we not discuss this? And we have, what was our recommendation on that, however, the commission not let that happen?
It was not very discussed when it brought up.
Oh, that, yeah, that's right.
Not discussed, no.
And also the ORI, how we do it on that?
So we, we actually talked to y'all at great length, we had, as you know, that was where we had the opportunity to discuss our limits from what the GBI and FBI recognize for our abilities to enforce criminal law, that that would take further action with council, and we went into, as you know, extended discussion.
I would need to have that for that.
Right, so we're kind of, you know, unless the council takes, Joey, you might want to speak to that, unless the council takes, uh, additional action, we'll be recognized by both GC, uh, GBI and, uh, the FBI, uh, we will not be able to obtain the status under GCIC, and basically obtain the ORI number. Joey, do you want to comment on that?
I think you explained it well. We've had a point, we've tried everything, we've tried the various agreements, and it would just be a matter of the council and whether you instruct the county to work to present you some other plan, is what I understood from the committee.
I had a request.
It's, it's up back to council, we've done everything administrative, by angler, I mean, agreement.
So that's, that's where we're leading the discussion, the possibility of standing at this point.
Yes.
That's where, I mean, we're still discussing. Okay, number six, hold reason, can't look for, in the business, three sixty-five business center. Now, I, I didn't get to attend that, even though I was definitely under the weather, but I understand several months did. And, uh, as I understand it, planning commission has agreed to keep Burton open, the county commission too, has to vote on that.
Right, so the county commission will meet October twenty-seventh, and they'll hear the recommendation, uh, one of twelve, uh, conditions, which we yet to get a copy of or the staff report, uh, from the county with regards to that proposal, we were able to raise some concerns, uh, in a very limited amount of time they gave us, a little bit of three minutes, and fortunately, we had other people in the audience that spoke up as well to some of the concern, but one of the, uh, recommendation and conditions was to leave Burton open, uh, so we'll see where that goes. And those that can attend on, uh, October twenty-seventh are certainly encouraged to do that at six P.M.
Okay. Something else we're considering also is the adoption of residential building code requirements, we'll have public comment next week, next week, next Monday, about that. But, so, you can always just say, that's the building code, look it up, we got copies of here.
We do.
What's been, proposed to be changed?
We have, uh, we published, uh, as well as the, the proposed, I can actually show it to you, if you'd like to see it.
Ten thousand six times.
I know, I, it's original, all this stuff, so give me a second. So this is actually the, uh, the proposals, so what has been considered is these odd items, what, uh, planning group went through is, is they looked at some items, uh, that they agreed with, and then some items they removed, and you'll see in here, we've actually recommended adoption on those, uh, and then the whole is noted, and then some exempted by adoption was R eleven thirteen, authority to disinteract service, remain acquired of the service utility provider, if they don't want to put that burden back onto the city. Uh, see, another amended recognition, see, council, board of appeals, and with the authority to employ contract experts in the discussion, that's another exception. Item two is regards to permitting, uh, and inspections, overall, item three, all construction exceeding fifty percent improvement to be required, or exceed, uh, four hundred square feet will be permitted, and then a couple of other items, let me go back to the top, that we're discussing by the way, were, uh, that they're gonna, uh, anticipate requiring construction dumps to be on site, opportunity that, uh, all permitting be put in permitting box that's successful, uh, from the street, and then, uh, last but not least, port of property available for up to three, one unit for every three houses in development. Anyway, that's a good read, that's another one, might put you to sleep, might, which I gave, it's a great deal of thought.
Okay, then we got some requests for, for Ron's district, we're gonna make that.
And I gave y'all some additional comments on that today, that we received, the planning commission, uh, tabled the item to be heard later this week, uh, actually what you received today in the box for the conditions, and what called permitted uses that they would like to protect. So each one of y'all have a copy of that, uh, the plan, uh, once we hear back from the planning commission is to meet this Thursday at six o'clock here for a brief meeting with opportunity, but then they can send you forward a recommendation for your meeting next.
Okay, you and that, um, the Moss Farm was approved by seat council, we have the orders, we got, actually, voter orders, is that correct?
If you approved those, I provided those to y'all mayor, for y'all to review, if you had any other comments, we captured your motions as best, uh, we could, but you don't need a further vote on those, I just wanted you to have those, um, because that's what I understood you approved, and Dennis and I compared notes, um, that was the same. We've also sent that to the applicant, to make sure that that was what they understood had been approved, and so unless council has any questions, you don't have to take a further vote on those, you've already approved those after nineteen.
Seven.
So that's ready for his signature?
Ready for your signature, unless, again, y'all, you know, there's thirty-one conditions.
Yeah, I thought we'd all agree to that.
Yeah.
That's, that's what it's.
Yes.
You can have it with your hand, or?
Yeah, I'll give it from the signature.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Vision Twenty Thirty Art Program, I'm about saying one of those, so bicycle racks, they're like, saying what they're chickens, but they're actually bicycle racks.
There's one right up front.
This is still here, I didn't know if you were getting it, you know, that's actually bicycle rack for kids, bicycles upright, and I was a kid when they were around, we do a kickstand, but nowadays are fancier, and that's a cute sand straight there, uh, we're gonna put those around the city, different places, we have, I know the locations here, but, uh, it's, it's a contribution from the Vision Twenty Thirty Art Program in, in Gainesville. Now, so we can also have some law art, and something else that they've offered to us, they've offered, if we come over a thousand dollars, they'll match four thousand dollars for more art in the city, but if you give them a block.
I thought that was for the block. This is, is that right? Do you want to talk about this?
Yeah. You know, that, that's, that's the minimum walkway in game, right there, and that's what they've done, the Vision Twenty Thirty Art Program, something out there in the city who, they say if we go raise a thousand dollars, they'll match a four thousand dollars and provide this, and we're not sure exactly what all they're buying with, if they're gonna, thanks, it's not working, we're not sure the details yet, so, that's something that's bad, that's finalized. Now, that's mentioned, I'm not sure what we got here, a press meeting, policy?
So that's Joey, I think you've mentioned to Joey as well, so that's a policy the council would adopt that references their location, how they'll participate in meetings, is that right, Joey?
Okay. Okay, um, you know, just with that, yeah, I'm, so, as far as meetings itself, for the rest, actually, sits and, yeah, take a pause, and, you know, so, that's, you know, as I say, concerned with the, yes, this was poor, so, we look at that too. So that, I hope y'all know, I, I didn't do it very well, but Harold Caldwell was a former mayor of Blue, he died, he died this past week, and everybody, and I talked to, nobody spoke, he didn't, anything, and, uh, when I was living last year, he said, Joe, good luck, that's all he said, Joe, good luck, as I understand it, he would, uh, he sort of resigned after a couple of years, and he said, mayor, not for me, and, uh, but, uh, that's the only thing I know about Harold Caldwell, is what I've heard, that other person knew about him, and I'm sure y'all have your own story about Harold Caldwell, but he was well-called here, he's named, he was on the side, is it, this building's named on the side of, or?
Yes, actually back on the, the flight on the outside of this.
I thought Mayor said.
Fire station, and do the renovations.
Our, the Little Palm Festival has been rescheduled for this weekend, Saturday and Sunday. It's halftime or somewhere. From ten to five, one days, and then there's a concert Saturday night, from six till nine, picturing, uh, I've got the Southern Stone, is that correct? We're getting a little better, but, uh, so, this is to replace the one where the weather causes serious doubts last, last month, but, uh, we're gonna have a good time, we're gonna get a ball field this time instead of the depot, so, uh, we all, y'all, go, go.
No, they're not gonna have it.
They're not gonna have it now, we got out of there. I might do something crazy, who knows? Uh, New York Magic Church wants to use the Palm Field in the, in the wilderness park for a Palm Festival on Saturday, October twenty-seventh, on the Polar. Uh, the Seminole Place wants to use the ball field and restrooms on the Monday night, or Halloween night, for Derek Daniel Halloween, but I forget what it's called.
It's like a trunk or tree.
Truck tree, yeah. Just talking to say, it'll be Monday night.
Yeah, it's not like it's September, obviously.
Does he do this? He did twenty-second.
It's not September, it's not September.
No, I took that, I'm a month, hey, well, get that right.
Actually, it's the twenty-fourth.
It is two, two, it's nine, yeah, two is nine, forty-four. We're close, somewhere, fourth month of the month, if I said that right.
They just need to send me a reminder.
All right, next, special election is November eighth, I'm not sure when the early voting started, I haven't kept up with this year, is it next week?
She, I believe that begins next month.
Next month, next month, yeah, I thought it was correct, so, but, uh, the election will be at First Bank Church.
Joey, do you want to talk about that?
Yes, uh, the early voting will be at the same early voting precinct that we use, and the same will be for the day of, from the eighth, it will be at the regular voting precinct, and then the Banks County residents will be told that Banks County, they can, they'll have a specific location at the precinct where the Banks County voters can come in and vote, but because of the changes in the election law, we have to have the voting at one precinct.
We're just gonna let it for that church?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, it's at the regular places, mayor.
We're right, early voting is actually starting next Monday? Nine to six, uh, both, those are his Halloween, I said.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, the Blue Bell Ladies, month of January twenty-sixth, noon to six-thirty, and the Big Red Dog, I guess you want us to take what you have, is that right?
The challenge we've had is there are no Fridays available in the month of October below, and we still do that, so we're looking at dates in November, and, uh, we may end up having to go to a Saturday date for the same, that's.
Okay, I'm writing down, number twenty-one, supposed to go to the next session, and, uh, we'll step back in the back, back here, and I'll just sit right here, and we'll come back and just, hold it in.
We're, um, item eight, that's a good gentleman.
Oh, I'm up, I left out, how did I do this? That adoption is there for the religious amendments, for, okay, you.
I'll align it the best I can, so I'm at, I'll give y'all, this is the areas that we're dealing with, just residential, uh, this was from your direction with committee and council, this is not the final document, uh, it just tells you the areas that we're dealing with, we hope to have a draft, uh, I hope to have a draft this week, that we can actually begin to have some discussion with the planning commission, so the main imp- So the main emphasis that today I want you to understand, remind y'all, y'all place a moratorium on residential applications. Uh, and that with the idea that these changes could be made within that period. Uh, Joey and I talked earlier, I think Joey mentioned November tenth. Yeah. The expiration. We'll see, I mean, we'll see how it matures and goes forward. Comes back from the planning commission, that's going to be a difficult task. Uh, try to meet with them and let them absorb all the changes. And then, of course, we want to have the same opportunity for y'all to explore those changes as well. So y'all have been pretty defensive about what you'd like to see. So hopefully, we're aligning ourselves with what's your viewpoints for.
Mayor, we may need to have that moratorium extended beyond the tenth. When we talk with the planning commission at this month's meeting, if they work on it in November because of the meeting schedule, then your meetings would be December twelfth and the nineteenth for final adoption of the amendments. Once y'all have had a chance to review those and take into account any comments you receive from the.
Do you need to hear this?
We will.
Not on this, not at this point, but we will need public hearing. That's what Joey's pointing to, December.
So I may have to, I may ask y'all, if you don't believe we can accomplish the tasks that need to be accomplished by November the tenth, then before November the tenth, you would need to extend the moratorium at least until December the nineteenth.
So the planning commission, going to this again.
They'll, they'll meet certainly for the first, in the first Tuesday of the month in November. Uh, I don't think I'll have any comments back then, uh, any sooner than that.
Do we need a mission committee before that? Need, we need, need wait on them before we need a committee.
Right. Well, let's see, let's get the draft document in our hands and then we'll go from there. We'd rather give y'all all the time you need rather than try to beat that November tenth deadline. So we can place that on the agenda for amendment, Joey, next, next Monday night for an extension.
And they meet on the first, and they mentioned at their meeting, they may want to take it into review whatever we have on the first and then schedule a public hearing later in the month of November so that they're able to give you all their recommendations in December.
Time to get in there, slow initially. Fine, yeah. When, when the second session's scheduled for the agenda, so I'll give the question to the adjourned executive session. What's my, 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 these chapters for adjourned execution? Can I have your second? Second, my girl is mid, I'll probably say hi.
No.
I'm going to text session, y'all just sit out here, we'll come back when we get done. Didn't want to hear your comments.
I have to go. This time.
I'm saving up too.
Everything on those.
I guess.
Hello, Lou. Doing well, how are you?
Oh, I did a good. How are you doing?
I think I'm cool, alright, yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm not gonna be able to come and see you. I got a new job and I've been in town training.
You gotta go with the hell of them.
Soon as things settle and I get settled into working that area that I'm going to be working here, um, in this area, I'll start having normal hours again, I'll come by and see you.
Yeah, okay.
Don't you want one of these chickens out on your, your house?
Yeah, I was just gonna tell you, kind of, which one would steer yourself.
Five or eight chickens.
Chicken. Oh, what those?
Yeah, I just wanted to come by and say hello.
By the way.
Yeah.
Or the cell.
Jim. What is up with this Luba news?
How are you?
Yeah, bye, Richard.
I did not know that. Oh, come on, man. Really, I did not. You've seen me here a lot.
I have, but I didn't know that it was, you know. I did not know that. I just thought that this was something that you did, but I didn't realize that it was. An actual thing. That makes sense.
Good. Well, um, they dropped me. Working. They need you to, pardon, not so I. My area, which my area changed again, it's gonna be Clayton to go on. Hartwell.
That's where you were sitting here with.
No, Commerce, Athens and Greensboro, Georgia.
I didn't tell you.
Hour forty-five minutes away, so. But right now, they've got you working in, uh, like Lawrenceville and La Crosse and so. And we just, we've had a lot of personal changes here the last few weeks. So we're short on some areas, so they're, had to shuffle people around.
So, Paul.
Do you mind this?
Well, some people may put those out themselves, which is cool. I don't blame them.
I am, I'm good.
I'm good, okay, you are.
There's a name.
You worked it hard for that.
No, I don't think I used to do it.
When I was it. I moved class. No, I'm doing okay. I just take another. Thank you, I'm glad you're here. And, uh, hey, it's so busy.
That's the first time I've ever said.
Well, I'm listening, well, I'm taking your advice. I get all the good things.
I said, I ain't ever, I went to that courtroom unless I walked in the light. That's not my average way to play.
I've been through three. I wasn't ready for it. I've been following what's happening here, though. A copy of that. And, um, next meeting, I'll have something I need to say. What I'm trying to do, what this thing I'm signing about, all together. Oh, I want the judge that was. A biopreneur for the city.
They wouldn't. Then he said, Stephen, Paul, Andrew Manes, he didn't tell me, they sit back down, they ain't know me. They ain't know, like, yeah, he, yeah.
So, so you know your way around that court office. Actually, the, the, so. What did they get on? Is he here?
Uh, yeah, you are, okay.
I'm glad you had a client. Oh, yes. I would have had a place for mom. Well, I like to thank y'all, because I'm doing the process, I'm doing. I'm liking that everything I say. I got a lot of this thing. Well, yeah, yeah, I'm like, you see that, there's also, no, it hasn't. But, yeah, like, it was the new mayor. Well, I'll tell you, um, you know, he had a doctor, he did it two weeks ago, so. So he thought, okay, we can establish with them and then. Five, um, some guy just come here, uh, 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 maybe playing a night, yeah. Well, this is Christian.
That's what you do here to help me out.
No, Christian.
He's having money, was, is one access.
Oh, really? You're supporting, you're okay, good. You're gonna deal? You're getting cheated.
That's.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I just had the commission meeting and they started.
That's why I thought, oh, it's probably. I was feeling a ball, it was a little bit of a.
Can I ask you, I'm watching, great, great example.
Well, I, I'd like to please out here, because I've been over the city since I've been running here since ninety-six. And just because I wasn't re-elected doesn't mean I'm not interested in coming out, seeing what's going on. And let people know how I feel about how things are now and how I. Yeah, oh, yeah, I'm trying to get all the respect I can share in the papers.
Because, you know, you don't get everybody to look.
Well, that's true. So, that's why.
You're quite lengthy.
Well, yeah, well, I'm trying to get this published in the Banks County, Newton, and Greenville news. To alert people about how I feel personally, of my return. I, I have progress of myself.
But I, I just wondered, why do you need these? I know you want to say.
Well, I, I.
But these are your thoughts on things in general. I just don't think they always address particular items.
They don't, they don't see why.
They don't always address to, to, to.
Well, well, I've come out and listened to see how I really feel about, uh, what the plans are on our city officials. And I would, and I'd like to inform through my, through my, through our officials we have as ones that help us to develop our city. Are they, if we're still realizing problems for everybody or are they only concerned about their own personal? Oh. It's a weird, it's a, it's a, but that's, but I'm concerned about.
I don't always agree with that.
Well, you know, I'm aware.
But I, I know it's true, it's a link. It doesn't talk about, it's a lot about the people who's here and who didn't have, I can see that. Things that they work on.
Yeah.
I can see that.
Yeah, well, I, all those assumptions, we are the elements that grow, that develop our city.
Or did they be here in the city? If they did, they would be here in this city.
Well, the thing about it is sometimes people have got to be awakened. Um, no, so it's just in the past, people get a new development, but if they see something there, it's like. I think they'll come out.
What about this city, the little website?
The what?
Website, yeah.
So probably they have a website, people, some people who do feel, sure, I know.
Have you asked?
No, I have not. Well. Well, no, I'm not. So if you know any way we can spread out the loop.
That's what I'm saying. Either the newspaper or after you see a little bit of.
Well, yeah, it's fine, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I will, I will have to take it, which is all the way.
It's one of those. Always tell me. It's a lot different weather.
Why?
I'm passionate, but, you know.
But after what?
People like to ban, but you're compassionate at times.
I, I guess, I also feel pretty tough to that, because murder happens times, you gotta cut it. It's gotta go by the law. Well, this guy loved it here.
Yeah.
Yeah, but how can I get this on the city website?
I can put it on that.
So, uh. Do, I, I would, yeah. I, I.
He was asking about reaching more people, and I said, I don't think.
So we get a total of five months to do this.
Reach more people, you do want to pay for, or like more people, you know, the city will do a website.
So the things I like, I want it to be, you know, website, whatever, to spread the news. I want people to, I'm trying to see how I definitely feel about our cities and things. I have a question for progress. Um, I've been able to do all my life. Uh, only way I've been able to learn and improve is to get out and travel and see what's going on inside. Like in the little area, and we're sitting there, brought out there. Uh, where are we at? Are we doing okay or are we way behind or what? You know, you got to travel, get out and see what people are doing elsewhere.
I mean, I'd be still. You have, uh, money.
Well, oh, right. We, we have time to top it up to, uh, of course, I'm talking about fifty bucks, you know.
But why do they call three sixty-five for any hire?
Some of the counties started all up, right?
Because three sixty-five is there in me, isn't it? They need to have, they're different roads. I noticed that.
It doesn't go, no, it's, it's the village.
I noticed that, they, they, they use like one road, it's not one road.
Yeah.
Thanks, you just showed this, I would, you just showed this.
Very good.
Yeah, uh, that's the agenda of the summer. It's already been electronic version. We'll talk to people online.
But they didn't exactly, you need to come out and make citizens' comments. I don't, I don't just comment about it, but.
Stuff like this might be a little more interesting. Certain things. Isn't that what it is? That's a point, too. Down the line. I guess that's great. You, you said you come to a lot of these meetings?
Yeah, I come to the meeting, definitely.
Does Luda do, uh, is there a session? They do like a meeting session? That's.
Like you go out. I was on third, I didn't know. Well, now, you know, uh. That's just kind of, kind of.
But, uh.
You do special things like this. Are you? Share it all?
I'm actually.
Oh, really? Oh, really? That's a real.
I'm, I'm scared.
Well, well, I'm not gonna say anything, I think I'll just go home and. They, they love it up and do as they can, every time we can get on the website. As well as I'm trying to get it into newspapers. I just want to spread the word. Okay?
Did you drive for it?
Yeah, I, I.
That's all.
They don't want me to drive. I do drive. You know, the hardest, the hardest thing is to give up to all the other things. Now, you youngsters, you're gonna find out all that's middle.
Well, man, if I can drive, I, I would go and sing. You gotta have your life. Those you move out.
Well, I sent you on the, so I'll come my car, and then you're home. You always come, you always come. You know, so, I mean.
Is there a, um.
You know, so if I.
Just, uh, is this posted anywhere online? Website or like that?
I've had, I've had that some of these.
Hot press. Hot press.
Be careful, more to God.
Well, thank you. It is. I, I, that's, well, say it's.
Yeah, oh, yeah, that would be awesome.
I'm looking at you.
What was his name?
Francis, thanks.
Thank you. I'm Christian.
You ever, uh, what about, um, is it worth to find out about our actions that happen? Like, I know there's some big ones.
Um, yeah, we, I know we've got some, yeah, the concession desk.
Y'all are talking about.
Um, a lot of which we post on, where we talk about, like, is when you, you know, there's a lot of.
Yeah, I listen my way in the world.
Exactly.
You're glad to be at work. Uh, you work Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, so when I'm nodding, I'm listening. Cause, uh, I have to be here by about five.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they're, they're there early.
There.
A lot of stuff I put on, it's recorded the day before, it's like playing and. Yeah. Probably have a couple of there at three sixty-five. They're high on the east. Kind of a lot there.
Hey, come back.
I drink beer.
They didn't serve you.
Good. I'll be right here, man. I got your back.
Yes, you ain't back.
I'm gonna get that back. No glass out there still. Uh, our executive session was discussing the name acquisition, and the property's on card here, and it will be ours this week. They, they were letting me put their hands together, so anyway. So, they were gonna start planning for the future, tear a building down, redo what we're gonna do over there, so that's, that's what I was thinking on that. Now, I promise we're gonna have system comments, but we'll have system comments right in. Seems like I can hear someone say, yes, ma'am.
I just wanna, uh, a couple of questions. One.
Come on up, bro, cause I'm recording. I know Francis, you're.
Hi, Francis. I have two con, uh, two comments I'd like to ask. On the car alley, would there be a chance that when you're tearing them down, is there any things that are solid, say, such as windows or doors or beams or something might be usable, that you would have, where the public would be able to purchase inside?
This city, we own that property, we would sound like we have to store that property. What about, have it sat here, have to store it?
Yeah, second question, I want to know, would we give, or would I be able to get a copy of the building permits?
The building company?
The building with farm, with farms.
I, I think I have one up front, right?
Cause I just want a house from the fact.
A bit, bit of.
My husband, who does, is self-employed and does construction.
Okay.
So, I want to know how, if I could get them, she would like affect him, so I can make sure he's doing the right steps.
I may have some money.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Do you guys?
Okay, on the election, tell the county, give you some good voting machines. So, last time, they had one down, and it was a possession that I had staying in the ring.
I don't remember that, but.
It's a tracking end of the deal when it comes to how county giving us what we need for the election. And, um, what was on that?
There's not a number, is there? There's not a number.
I stood in the rain too, when all my folks, and they was, they was a fuss. But, um.
I'm gonna have, um, write that out.
Yeah, the permits and everything, um, and y'all go to. But I think we still need to work on the permits and exactly, no, I mean, I went and got a permit today, cost four hundred and sixty-nine dollars, that's with AC, for two eight-by-eight decks and everything. And, um, I gotta wait to put up me four PMS on the front and the back, stuff like that, and ask someone to come out and see if it's still good.
Setbacks?
Yeah, for setbacks. But, um, like when, um, I mean, I don't know the, um, survey of this property. I can do it from the road, like in some, some properties, you know, and you know where the pins on the back, cause all the wood and all that stuff, it's kind of rough. But I can make a mark where I want that set, you know, it's kind of. And when I'm, when I'm doing one, um, a job, I don't know what need permit, what not. I would like to, for a COVID person, also to come out, you know, I work for the people. So, that means if the people won't get a permit, what I do, you know? And then also, I like him to come out to explain to me what's, what's, um, essential and what ain't. I would like to push the permit issue anyway, only inspections. For example, my son bought a house next door, I remodeled it. They didn't require those inspections on it, they go through their federal loan. They loaned me the money, they made a deal with the owner. Now, the owner netted a porch without a permit. I missed it. I didn't inspect it. And that's the reason why I would like to have an inspector, second quarter eyes, looking at these projects. Because, for example, it dropped twelve inches. Okay. And it could, it could hurt these people. These people would have just moved out, you know? And I went and looked at it and had a jacket up and put some leg books in, and it then got the, um, though lamp. And I went through this with Craig Smith's problem. When you ever five foot, you got a double up on the bank. See, stuff like that, I like to overhear, but I missed overhear, cause I didn't plan, I meant, I thought he had a permit. And last week, I got on the radio and told him, well, he missed, but it won't hurt for a second, set eyes. You know, to look upon stuff like this for safety. You know, and I know people went mad, cause I don't believe in high dollar permits and all hidden down there. So, y'all, put your heads together, figure out what fines without permits, you know, or whatever you got to do for safety and systems.
Thanks.
And I would love, just like Kingsley, I just pull my license, I just come in, go get a permit for the roofs. Roofs are the same thing as your porches, safety. If I'm up there, tearing your roof off, replacing plywood, placing raptors, I feel like it should be permitted.
No, it is required to be permitted, what you just described. Other than the maintenance, uh, if you're replacing raptors, that's structural. But it's clear in the IBC code what would be required of permit.
But, you know, like, ain't gonna name no permit, I mean, name no names where everybody knows, or a certain people knows, where a job just been done with roof on this property back here, that they went in there and they just put a piece of plywood and put a little wood on, ain't no work, but I did not get it. But, you know, it needs to be permitted where people can be safe.
That's what we're, I'm trying to make sure, make sure we move that way. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Cassie Swernigen. I'm at six four, six, um, sixty-seven forty-seven, Oakdale, Ohio. I'm here representing the historical society, um, of Louisville, Georgia. Um, we're presenting a check for fifteen hundred dollars out of the funds that we've raised so far, um, for the Carl Ranger boost.
So, thank you very much.
Am I giving this to you or him?
I'll, I'll give it to him.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Keep coming. Thanks, Cass.
Do you guys? I said company, but I don't know your name.
Uh, Christian Ashman. I'm with WDUN News.
I'm with the W, yeah, okay. You took BJ's place. And your name, I, I've seen you before, I can't think of your name. But, yeah, you guys seen it?
I'm Jeffrey.
I couldn't remember your name, I'm sorry. What was that? You know what's got, you know what to say?
Oh, yeah, on the concession stand, I'm seeing more people wanting to use that thing, so that's good. Next week, I will install a tankless hot water heater under the sink, so it won't burn up too much electricity for y'all to use.
Okay. All right, I guess it's time for, sit, a council conference, anybody? You?
I'm just glad to see the people are digging up. We need to have more people out, y'all keep going. I'll second that. We just don't have near enough people coming out.
Thank y'all for coming out and enjoy this beautiful weather we've been having.
And. You don't want to talk to us? I'm here for a lot of, you know, that. All right, now, what, a couple of things I want to say, something that somebody in the concession stand, you know, I pitched a settlement this time. We, we got a tax process on the depot run for the rest of the year. The concession stand, let's advertise and tell everybody that if they want to use that, pay a fifty-dollar cleaning fee, use it. They clean, we'll give you money back ticket for the rest of the year. Can I do that?
It's a council decision, yes, sir.
Yeah, but I agree with that idea? So, that's, that's something we must start, just free run off to the concession stand and have the ball field for the rest of the year, with a fifty-dollar advocacy fee and deposit.
So, they, they're gonna pay that fifty-dollar cleaning fee or not?
Yeah, they, they pay, they pay, probably give reverse, yeah, just.
I got you, got you.
Just not do the depot, that direction.
Got you. Yes.
I, we'll see if we can just use that concession stand, so we have a remodeler and, uh, go up there, next spring, we might have a big old thing out there.
How about the lights on the poles?
I suppose, that's not, my, I brought the ball on that, and I get, I brought the ball on that, they're not working.
Okay, well, I'll call.
Thirty, thirty-nine, thirty-nine.
They said they replaced the, uh, photos at a lot.
Yeah, but I, I knew you'd been messing around, and I checked thirty-nine, thirty, and I've been on the water since then, so. We don't get those last picks, that, that's one's party and also the bucket. All right. I'm here paying what the urn, it's, it's my guest, I'm gonna say. I want to thank my G for the urn. Second, the niece on Thursday, I.
I.
Come on.
Where are your city ordinance on the hatch?